Good evening. It is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. My name is Joe Baker and am Mayor of Kennedy, Texas. It is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a forum is present. District One Councilmember Cindy Seine.
Here.
District Two Councilmember John Rodriguez.
Here.
District Three Councilmember Chris Parker.
Here.
District Four Councilmember James Douglas.
Here.
District Five Councilmember Sandra Schultz.
Here.
Five members of the city council are present, and we have a forum present this evening. I would like everyone to rise as we welcome Pastor Christy Mahia, who is pastor of El Apocento Alto Church, to lead us all in prayer. After the prayer, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I will open with a scripture first. In 1 Corinthians 10, the word of God says, "I beseech you, brethren, by the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, that ye all speak the same thing, and that there be no divisions among you, but that ye be perfectly joined together in the same mind and in the same judgment." Lord, we come before you humbly, Father. With humble hearts, Lord, we ask you, Lord, we know that you are our help, Lord. You are Creator of heaven and earth and all the things in it, Father. So this is why we come to you with our requests and our petitions tonight. We ask, Lord, that you unite us all, Lord, all the members of this council and everyone here partaking in this meeting, that you unite every single one of us, every single one of them, Lord, for your glory, Father. I pray, Lord, that you give them a heart after your own, that you give them the mind of Christ, and that you allow them to have your peace as they speak about the things concerning this community. Lord, I ask that you direct their steps, that you would bring light, that you would give them your wisdom and your understanding, Lord, that they may walk in your path of righteousness, Lord, for we know in that way that this community cannot fail, Father. We pray, Lord, that this leadership would be a light to this community, Lord, that they would bring your light, no matter how dark the circumstances seem, Lord. We know what the word of God says, Father. We know how things are going, and we can see it before our eyes, but with faith and hope we believe, Lord, that with your light in them and in us, Lord, that we can bring light into the community that will cast out all darkness. So we trust and we hope in you, Lord, and all that you, the ability that you have to give them, Father. So I pray also, Lord, over their families, over all council members, over their minds, Lord, their hearts, protect them everywhere they go, Lord, for this responsibility that you have given them over this community is great, Lord. But we know, Lord, that you have called them to this purpose for a reason. You know the abilities that they have within them, Lord, for you created them for this time and for this purpose in this world. And we pray, Lord, that you would help them, strengthen them, bring them comfort, give them your knowledge and your understanding, Lord, so they may lead this community of Kennedy and even the county, Lord, into your path of righteousness, Lord. And so we thank you, Lord, for this time that they are all united here in one mind and in one spirit to glorify you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I have one final scripture. Romans 15, 4 through 6. The word of God says, "For whatever things were written before were written for our learning, that we, through the patience and comfort of the scriptures, might have hope. Now may the God of patience and comfort grant you to be like-minded toward one another according to Christ Jesus, that you may with one mind and one mouth glorify the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ." Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Mahia. We really appreciate you being here. Thank you for leading us in prayer this evening. Have a good evening. That brings us to number five on the agenda, citizen comment. Mr. Lind, we have any comments signed up for this evening?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a comment at this time? If not, then we will move along to item number six, presentation from Ms. Texas, 2021, Mallory Fuller, on suicide prevention. And I believe we have Melissa Traywick Sullivan to introduce our guest. Ms. Sullivan?
Hi, everybody. My name is Melissa Sullivan. Most of you know me, but if not, a lot of people know me as the one that owns the cafe across the way. But I'm involved with this with Mallory Fuller, Ms. Texas, because I've been involved with the Texas Miss America Organization for about a decade. And I'm so proud of Mallory. Mallory started at the age of seven, actually, and had her heart set on being Miss Texas. So this was a journey for her for about 18 years, which she got to last June. So she was crowned Miss Texas, and she will go to compete for Miss America December 16th. So everybody that's involved with the Miss America Organization has what's called a social impact statement. And as Miss Texas, Mallory's is suicide prevention. And it's just something that's so relevant and important nationwide, but I think especially in Texas and a lot in our rural communities, and we're finding that out more and more with the rural schools. So I had coordinated time for Mallory to come down these last two days, yesterday and tomorrow, where she will visit a lot of the county schools. She went to Pettis today, Ponte, Rungie, Kennedy tomorrow, and give her a presentation for junior high and high schoolers. But I thought you guys might be interested in hearing kind of some of her presentation, why it's important, some tips on things on as a community, especially you sort of a city manager, on how maybe people can collaborate with the chief as well, on kind of helping bridge that gap that I think is missing with a lot of mental health workers and our citizens, and especially the younger age. And I'll let Mallory go into some more statistics about what that is age-wise and kind of why this is her platform. And so, Mallory, I'll turn it over to you.
I have my heels on right now, so fix the microphone. Thank you so much for having me. Like Melissa said, my name is Mallory Fuller, and I am serving as Miss Texas this year. And it has been a whirlwind of a couple of months as Miss Texas. I have traveled about 23,000 miles in my first four months, and I am advocating on behalf of suicide prevention. I began my work with suicide prevention when I was in high school. So I lost one of my really good friends to suicide, and I'm from a small town as well. And so it was something that was really devastating and really shocked our entire community when we lost Johnny, because he was somebody that was, he was happy, and he seemed like he had it all together. He played sports, he was in all of the honors classes, the AP classes. And so when we lost Johnny, it was so devastating to us and so shocking, because we never expected it to happen to someone like him. So after we lost Johnny, his family was determined to make sure that his legacy would be more than just the suicide statistics. So they partnered with an organization called the Jason Foundation, and the Jason Foundation created an act called the Jason Flat Act, which makes it mandatory for teachers to be trained in suicide prevention annually. And so I actually was instrumental in getting that passed in Texas. So I went with Johnny's family, and we worked, and we testified on behalf of that act, and we got it passed in Texas in 2015. So I have been partnered with the Jason Foundation for the past, let's see, six years now, doing a lot of work with them. She mentioned some statistics. So suicide is actually the second-leading cause of death among teens, and it is only surpassed by unintentional accidents. So when we look at unintentional accidents, we have car accidents, if there's any kind of accidental drug overdose, all of those go into unintentional accidents. And so suicide is second right behind that. And it's actually believed if all of the suicides were being reported, it might be much closer to the unintentional accidents. So it's something that is affecting everybody. It's affecting rural communities, it's affecting people in cities, and it's been interesting as Miss Texas, I've been able to go into a lot of rural communities. I've had counselors from elementary schools, middle schools, high schools that have brought me in and had me speak on behalf of suicide prevention and mental health. And it's just so interesting, because especially coming out of the COVID pandemic, it is so incredibly important right now that we're talking about it, because so many people are struggling. Our teens are struggling, adults are struggling, all kinds of people are struggling with their mental health. And so I have a passion for that as Miss Texas. I've been to about 30 schools so far as Miss Texas to speak to elementary-age school students, middle school and high school. And so it's something that is very, very near and dear to my heart and something that is really important to me. And so as Miss Texas, I hope to be able to remove this stigma for suicide, because I think we get a little bit better about talking about mental health, but I think suicide is still something that is so stigmatized, and we don't want to talk about it, because it's hard to talk about. But when we remove that stigma and we start talking about it and we educate people on the warning signs, resources that are available, there are so many incredible resources out there that people simply don't know about. If we tell people what they can do when they recognize warning signs in people, in their teens, in their friends, in their adult acquaintances, if we tell people what they can do when they're recognizing these warning signs, I think that we're ultimately going to be able to make a huge difference. One thing that I tell my high school students when I go into schools is, I think we've always had such a stigma around suicide that when we think that somebody might be struggling or they might be having suicidal thoughts, we don't want to ask them about it. But that's actually one of the best things that you can do, is to ask somebody if they're thinking about suicide, or ask them if they're struggling, because it allows for that conversation to start. And so all of these things are things that I advocate on as Miss Texas. I teach people about the warning signs, I teach people what they can do if somebody might be struggling, because I truly believe it is so, so important. And then the last thing that I'll leave you with, so I talked a little bit about my friend Johnny at the beginning of the topic, but my best friend Colby also struggled with suicidal thoughts when we were in high school. And I have two very vivid pictures in my mind when I think back. And I remember Johnny would come into our freshman year English class, and he would lay his head down on the desk, and he wouldn't talk to anybody. And I remember thinking, I wonder what's going on. I wonder what it is that's bothering him and why he's not wanting to talk to everyone. Lash forward to our sophomore year history class, Colby would come in, and she would lay her head down on the desk, and she wouldn't talk to anybody. And looking back, that behavior in Johnny could have been something that sparked an interest in us, that we should have dug a little deeper, we should have figured out what was going on in his life, because he was struggling. But being from a small town, we never thought that one of our students would die from suicide. And so the difference between the two stories is that after Johnny passed away, the teachers at our school began getting trained in suicide prevention, and they learned those warning signs, and they recognized them in Colby. They recognized that she was struggling, and they were able to save her life, because she was able to get help from a counselor. And that's why I truly believe that when we start talking about suicide, when we are educated on those warning signs and what we can do, that we can save lives. And I hope with all of my heart that as Miss Texas, I am able to save lives. And that is all I have for y'all, but thank you so much for listening. And that's all I have.
Yep. Questions?
Do y'all have any questions? Yes.
Just want to thank you for being here, Ms. Fuller, to help bring awareness to this topic. It's something that should be all near and dear to our hearts. And congratulations on the success you've had with your efforts to build awareness and do what can be done to prevent these suicide deaths. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you all so much.
We have a proclamation that I'd like to read at this time. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us in our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm, and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than 47,000 people die by suicide. This is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the second-leading cause of death among people aged 15 to 24. And whereas the city of Kennedy is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain a taboo topic to speak on. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for the existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now, therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of the city of Kennedy, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Kennedy, Texas. Thank you again. Really appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank you so much.
This brings us to agenda item number eight, presentation of appreciation awards to Randy Garza for 22 years of service to the city of Kennedy as a mayor and councilman, and Felipe Leal for 18 years of service to the city of Kennedy as District Two and Three Councilman. Bear in mind, just a moment. Mr. Leal will sit forward. Sir. Just want to read what it says on the plaque before we present it to Mr. Leal, and first we say thank you for your service to this community for so many years, and we really appreciate it from the bottoms of our heart. So this is what the plaque says. Felipe Leal, thanking you for 18 years of dedicated and selfless service to the residents of Kennedy, Texas as District Two and Three Councilman. There's no greater challenge and there is no greater honor than to be in public service. That's a quotation from Condoleezza Ross. Mr. Leal, congratulations. Thank you. One other item here for Mr. Leal. This is from the State House of Representatives. Our state representative, Ryan Julian, has arranged for this recognition for Mr. Leal, and I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas Felipe Leal, Karnes County distinguished himself through his 18 years of dedicated service to the community as a member of the Kennedy City Council. And whereas Mr. Leal was elected to represent District Three on the Kennedy City Council in 2000, and he later held the position for District Two, he ultimately concluded his tenure with the council in 2018. And whereas highly engaged in his community, Mr. Leal has volunteered at the local fire department and emergency medical services department. He recently retired from his career at Ashland. And whereas through his outstanding leadership and commitment to good governance, Felipe Leal has contributed immeasurably to his community, and in so doing, he has earned the respect and appreciation of area residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the House of Representatives of the 87th Texas Legislature hereby commend Felipe Leal for his exemplary service to the city of Kennedy, and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future, and be it further resolved that an official copy of this resolution be prepared for Mr. Leal as an expression of high regard by the Texas House of Representatives. And this is signed by the Speaker of the House and State Representative Ryan Julian. Mr. Leal, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Garza is unable to be with us this evening, and he has a similar resolution. Wait a minute. I'd like to read that as well. Whereas the Honorable Randy Garza distinguished himself through his 22 years of dedicated service to the Kennedy community. And whereas Mr. Garza worked in behalf of his fellow citizens as mayor and as a member of the Kennedy City Council. In addition, he has given generously of his time and talents to the Parks and Recreation Board and to local little league programs. And whereas through his outstanding leadership and commitment to good governance, Randy Garza has contributed immeasurably to his community, and in so doing, he has earned the respect and appreciation of area residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the House of Representatives of the 87th Texas Legislature hereby commend Randy Garza for his exemplary service to the city of Kennedy, and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future, and be it further resolved that an official copy of this resolution be prepared for Mr. Garza as an expression of high regard by the Texas House of Representatives. This also is signed by the Speaker of the House. So we'll make sure Mayor Garza receives this. Give it time. Thank you. And we have two more special guests for this evening. Brandon, if you'll come forward, and Ken Riley, if you'll come forward, please. Okay, we'll start with Ken. He's closest. Whereas Ken Riley distinguished himself through his many years of dedicated service to the community as a member of the Kennedy City Council. And whereas Mr. Riley was a council member for 15 years, and during that time, he also served as the city's mayor pro tempore. He has further benefited his fellow citizens through his work as Karnes County Emergency Management Coordinator and as a little league volunteer. And whereas through his outstanding leadership and commitment to good governance, Ken Riley has contributed immeasurably to his community, and in so doing, he has earned the respect and appreciation of area residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the House of Representatives of the 87th Texas Legislature hereby commend Ken Riley for his exemplary service to the city of Kennedy, and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future, and be it further resolved that an official copy of this resolution be prepared for Mr. Riley as an expression of high regard by the Texas House of Representatives. Ken, congratulations. Thank you. Whereas Brandon Briones distinguished himself through his many years of dedicated service to the community as a member of the Kennedy City Council. And whereas Mr. Briones represented in District Three for five terms, and over the course of his tenure, he worked to ensure the availability of clean water and played an integral part in the East Main Drainage Project and the Escondido Creek Parkway. He has also served his community as a member of the Planning and zoning board and has a longtime volunteer with the fire department. And whereas through his outstanding leadership and commitment to good governance, Brandon Briones has contributed immeasurably to his community, and in doing so, he has earned the respect and appreciation of area residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the House of Representatives of the 87th Texas Legislature hereby commend Brandon Briones for his exemplary service to the city of Kennedy, and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future, and be it further resolved that an official copy of this resolution be prepared for Mr. Briones as an expression of high regard by the Texas House of Representatives. Ben, congratulations. Mayor Baker, can we get a photograph of the three honorees and you over here, please? Absolutely. Or, I mean, over there against the wall, please? And then we'd also like to ask, if it's okay, if Ms. Texas in a second photo would participate in that for us to send to Representative Julian. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, departmental reports. And the first on the list is the Public Works Report. Good evening, Mr. Higgins.
Hello. Good afternoon, city council, mayor. We had a very big month for the month of November, October. I'm going to start off, I'm just going to mention a couple of things on the first page. If you have any questions, you can stop me at any time. We have ordered our back truck that the council approved back in the budget. It has been assembled, but they talk like it may be around July or August before we're receiving. So just kind of thought I'd mention that. Just want to tell you how much I appreciate the council letting us do that with the budget, and I feel that is a very needed piece of equipment for the city. Let's get down to the T C Q part. We had two more water notices for the month of October. Throw a couple extra things in there about our flushing, our samples. The BPAT is just an abbreviation for Backflow Prevention Assembly Tester. We just shortened it down for that. That is letters that we sent out a couple months ago, and we continue to send those out, and as the results come in for the backflows, we keep up that, try to monitor that as best we can. I sent information in November as requested by T C Q as an update on our two violations that we got an extension for up till December of 2022. And every three months, I have to send a letter of some kind showing where we are with that as part of that extension. So that was done in November. I have another one in January. Anyway, I have them on my board there. Down the projects, I'm sure Mr. Lind will talk more about some of those. The 792 water line relocation project, we completed getting that line moved over. It's all hooked up, it's going good. We will keep an eye on it and make sure that we properly keep the backfield and stuff with ditch line. The Long Way Alto water line replacement that we talked about, all the lines are in, but the boring people that do the boring are backlog because of illness, the personal thing and another, but they're looking to be here on the 15th. So hopefully next Monday, they'll be here and set up, and next week, they'll have that completed. And when we do those official crossovers and tie-ins, once those are done, if appropriate, we'll send out water outage letters and so forth. The manholes that we're replacing back over here, kind of through the woods behind the Craig Street lot over kind of towards Pulling, I got a phone call from that guy today. They got one right there at the corner of Craig. They've got one right there at the corner of Craig Street. Well, the parking lot and main right there, that's real low. They, looks like they've got it completed, but the two of them down in the woods, they're talking like it may be December before they actually get those manholes here for replacement because of labor shortage, they said. So hopefully we'll get that a little quicker. We had a pre-con meeting for the 80th water line extension for the Kennedy Apartments. Again, Mr. Lynn may talk more about that during his presentation. They're looking to start sometime next week. They're having some difficulty with some of their lines, but some of the other stuff, materials that they have, I'm sure they can get started with that here pretty soon. But that's not gonna really affect anybody or anything, because it's a brand new extension. So there's not gonna be any outages or anything with, with that, so. Our generators, they're coming along, but they were also backlog because of illness and stuff with the contractors doing the work. They didn't specify if it was COVID or, or just what the problem was. It was having some family issues with that. But it is moving along pretty good. We still hope to have all that in by December, towards the end of December, but we'll see. On my notes here, we did, I did report a break-in at the wastewater treatment plant. Don't have a list with me with the stuff that was missing or damaged, but...
How'd they get in? Through the back?
Through that very back gate on the back by where all the piles of stuff is. They cut the lock on the gate and went around. It looks like following the trail that they left, kind of like breadcrumbs. I guess things got heavy and they dropped stuff as they went, kind of certain, around towards the back of the animal shelter area and on around back that way is the way it looked like they come from. But we haven't been able to, haven't heard anything else from all of that.
So we've secured the sewer plants?
Well, we've replaced the chain and the, and the lock. We've had all the door knobs and locks replaced on the lab building and the little office building and the shop building. You know, and then we're making sure that the vehicles and equipment, the keys are out, doors locked on those and put inside with the new locks. So we make the buildings a little more secure. When the guys get through with the One Cruise Training Facility and those two buildings, other two buildings there, they'll be working, trying to get security out there and at our old plant also, the cameras. But I think they're backlog and backordered on the cameras and trying to beef up the security that way. On our train, I mentioned it last month, but it did happen on the first day of October. So I made, I made, so I hadn't mentioned it last month. But Cody Bryan had passed his Class C Water Treatment Operator Exam. Cody Bryan and Austin Bryan both took an online class of utility safety. Julius Garcia took an online class of basic water. I attended the TWA monthly meeting at Stockville. And then we had a safety, I call it safety game slash training on the 22nd at the Convention Center. And I just use that as our training for the month of that. And then we'll go to page two. You'll see the first column, if y'all have this, is what the wells actually pump. And then over in the next column is what the water we actually produce to sell to the customers. You'll see that 46,600, 66,000 gallons. And roughly 1,600 meters with a 31, 33 connection. Page three, water produced from the wells. Again, this number is different because we go from meter reading to meter reading, not from the first month date. So we, from meter reading to meter reading, we produced 43,303,000 gallons. The water we accounted for through the billing that I get from the consumption report was 38,534,000. We had 4,768,000 unaccounted for, and I'm gonna skip on down here to the bottom. We had a very busy month for leaks. As you can see, we had 21 leaks for a total of 1,338,878 gallons. When you figure all this out, we accounted for almost all the water. So we only had a 2.11% unaccounted for water loss. So I think that's pretty good. Page four is our, our water stage restriction chart here. You can see with all the leaks we had during the month, you can see a four, a little higher than normal days of usage there. But we still, we're in stage two now. And we only hit stage two once during all of those leaks. And because we did, we lost a ton of water during the month. But we are still, on the average, still really good. So if the council wanted to, I could still recommend going to the stage one on the water restrictions. Page five, this is just the work order report where we do service orders and stuff. And we have here 523 service orders that we performed through the month. And if you go back, this starts a new fiscal year. If you go back and look at last fiscal year, we were doing seven, eight, nine hundred, a thousand a month. But if you look at that too, that was when I was also counting streets and parks. So if you look at this one, the numbers are way down compared to last year at this time. And that's because streets and parks do a lot and we do a lot. And then when you take that half off, so just in case. Page six is our wastewater treatment plant, F-Lun. We treated and sent to the receiving stream 33.699 million gallons for the month. We reported 2.9 inches of rain. And we had no SSOs that we reported to T C Q for, for the month. And then on the last page, page eight again, is where I've kind of put together a chart that I used myself, water we produced versus water we treated leaving the sewer plant. And you can see some of those days are pretty close. I just like to know what we're producing. I like to know what's going out sewer plant. This is something that I do. Especially when it rains, I can look at these and I can tell we got a lot, a lot of eye to eye or issues with the sewer. Or if these numbers jump up, we have a water leak somewhere, that's when we know that the water may be leaking going into a sewer line and, and helping track that away. So this is something that I do for myself. And that's all I have at this time, unless anybody has anything that would like to...
Any questions for Mr. Higgins?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Jerry, with regards to the break-in, there was a set of keys stolen from one of our vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Did we ever get that vehicle rekeyed?
Yes, sir. The same day, the guy that we use for all of our stuff, he came right down, changed out the, in the truck and made keys for him. So has new keys, doors, ignition. And I brought, I kept one, they have one, I brought one to City Hall. So we have three keys now to that truck and... So yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Appreciate it. Continuing with number nine on the agenda under departmental reports, Police Chief Report, Chief Ash.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I have a big one today. October for animal control, we did have an issue where our computer crashed, so we had to get that replaced. It turns out it's about 10 years old, so it didn't want to work anymore. But we did get that fixed and they're up and running out there now. So if you notice on their citations, they are down this month, but I believe that's because of better compliance. People are starting to, to comply better. So and what they're doing now is they kind of give warnings and then if they do it again, then they're right taking it, so that may go back up again. But we're really trying to get people to comply, so that's good. The humane organization now has started taking a few more dogs. They were down to just taking one or so a week, or two or three down a week. So we're hoping to move some of our, our dogs out again a little quicker. That was kind of backing us up as well. We did have to trap several, I put pigs, but they're actually avocados over on Daly and, or Daly and Sixth Street there, over at Danny's there in the creek. That lady complained about these avocados coming up. They were tearing up her yard and she couldn't get out of her car. So we were able to trap them and move them to a different location, humanely move them so they're out of the way. But they were wild pigs, they would probably just be a barbecue, but since they're avocados, they were released and stuff. For the police department, we did have our National Night Out on October 5th. I know some of y'all came out and I appreciate that. We had a really good turnout. We also had a lot of other agencies come and provide information, county attorney, district attorney, some other social organizations that provide help to citizens. Had a really good turnout. I did want to make sure and say thank you to Walmart, HEB, our Chamber of Commerce. They were very helpful with that. Alexander Ford also was one of our sponsors. And then our volunteers, Paul Foley, Mara Luna, Lisa De La Santos and Jesse Alexander did all the cooking and put the food for them. We had hot dogs for everybody. And I think hot dogs and chips and water. This was a really good event. We're hoping to do another one next year, same thing, kind of keep building on. We now have a date for our officer to go to canine training. He, our officer goes on the 6th of December. He'll spend two weeks in his training with our new canine. He'll be back on the 17th, I think they finished, on Friday, whatever that is. It's two weeks. And then when he comes back, then the following week, the dog will be deployed. So you should start seeing him. We'll make sure Facebook and when you have your next meeting, I'll bring him in and let y'all meet him. He's a black lab, should be very social. He's not a bite dog or anything like that. So single purpose drug detection dog. So we're real excited. I got word today that our vehicle has been updated or upgraded for the canine insert. So we'll get that picked up the next day or two, and so we'll have a vehicle phone as well. So we'll move along on that. We had just over 100 hours of training last month, including we sent two officers to train a hostage negotiation. That was the big one, spelled money on. It was, I spent two officers for a week to hostage negotiation training. This will give us a lot more capabilities in case we have a situation like that. It's also really good training just in de-escalation and, you know, talking people down to have that training. So I now have three qualified negotiators along with five or six qualified SWAT members as well, so we can deploy most, most anything we need now. Of course, we'll bring in help if we need it as well. As you can see, our calls for service were up again this month, kind of getting the bells start peaking down a little bit as the weather gets toward and people go back in in the evening. Our traffic stops and citations continue to stay up at, at a high level. And our building checks remain real high. The guys are doing a really good job of checking buildings at night, trying to prevent these burglaries. Can't always find people in the back in the woods somewhere, but you can sure check doors on businesses. So we're doing about 200 of those every month now. So the guys are checking quite a lot of doors at night. So I told them keep that up. That's really good work, so. And that is really it, unless you have questions.
Any questions from Chief?
Can y'all catch your coins?
Yes, thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Thank you also for everything you did for National Night Out. Sounds like a great community event and I'd love to see that continue in the future.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll work on it again next trip.
And Jolene, thank you for the chamber's support with that. If there's no further questions for the chief, then we'll move on to the next item in our report. And that is Building Department and Code Compliance Report. Mr. Albio?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. For the month of October, we're looking at a total of 29 service calls. 29 service calls, if you look at the numbers, we had two building permits that were issued, five plumbing permits, four plumbing inspections, five electrical inspections. For the month of October, our service calls were a little low. I don't know, I was out of the office from the 7th till, till the 27th. So with that being said, there was, there was a little less activity for the month of October. We were still able to collect $1,109.20 of permit fees. Our collection station stayed consistent with the 46 dumps at the collection station, which, which is good, which the citizens are still getting the message across to come in and have access, they have access to the selection station. So we're looking, we're looking good on that. Also too, along with the report, by the end of this week, I'm gonna have a report submitted to Mr. Lynn, to the city manager. We do have eight properties that we're looking at, that total of 19 leans. Those eight properties have, some of those properties have one lean, some have three or four. We're submitting those to the city manager. Those totaled $67,251. We're gonna submit that to, by the end of the week, to Commissioner Lynn. And hopefully we can submit that to then our city attorney to review, to see what we can do to, to proceed maybe partly for closing on these leans. Again, there's eight properties scattered all through the city of Kennedy. And we're hoping to get one property in question going. And then hopefully if that works out, then the city attorney will let us know what the status is on that and what we have to do as far as a legal part and, and within our legal parameters. In September 29th, we signed a, we went with a different third-party inspection company. As you know before, our third-party inspectors were Veritas. We now contracted with Aoka. It's spelled A-O-K-A, Aoka. And they're out, they're an engineering firm, third-party company that are out of Dallas. We thank, with the, we, myself and Ruby, the city secretary, met with Ganesh, who's the CEO and founder of the company. With what they do, they basically are gonna do, continue to do third-party inspections, plumbing, electrical, you know, all, plan reviews. But what we're doing a little different this time from, from Veritas, they're doing, they're doing the electrical, HVAC and plumbing inspection virtually. And what they do is the inspector is basically, I think he's out of Dallas. And what they do is we submit a request to, for inspection. After that inspection is submitted, then they send us a link or they send the contractor a link. He clicks on that link, the phone turns on and he's looking at the meter loop. I'm just gonna say meter loop, he's looking at the meter loop. And as he's, as we're have the phone on the meter loop, he's taking screenshots. And then he's going back to say, that looks good, that doesn't look good. And then he sends us a report. So kind of doing virtual inspections is better because it's done that same day. And that same day that we can get an inspection done, we can send it out to the utility companies and get it done faster. So it's more convenient instead of waiting 24 hours or even 48 hours, you know. So it's very convenient. We're still, we're still, there's a little bit of work that we need to do. Me and Ruby are working on that as well, creating new forms, creating new fee schedule as well as to try and get this company to come in. So right now, we're kind of over that, but we still have four, maybe four large projects with Veritas that we're still gonna finish off with. After that, it's all gonna be Aoka after that. So, but as of right now, we're gonna go ahead and we're working on that. Along with that, we're gonna revamp the permit fee schedule. I'm gonna go ahead and submit that as well to Commissioner Lynn. With a new company, there's new fees. Some of the fees may be a little higher, some of the fees may be a little lower. But we're gonna be working on that. We'll submit that to Commissioner Lynn and he'll present it to council. We have different options, maybe up to three options to get to council to look at, see what y'all like, see what y'all maybe can approve. So we're working on that as well. And again, we're still trying to... And again, we're still trying to clean up around town. We're going to go ahead and, we have 11 violation letters ready to be sent out this week, various parts of town. So we'll pick it, we'll be picking up. The last month I was out, so our numbers were a little low. They'll start picking up in the month of November again. And once that we do that, we'll get, we'll get back into rhythm again. And if anybody has any questions or anybody has any complaints about properties around town, feel free to give me a call or email me and we'll look into those properties as soon as we can. That's, that, that is my report for code compliance and building.
Any questions for Mr. Albiol from the council?
I do have one question. When you're gone, you mentioned that you were gone from the 7th to whatever. When you're gone, who takes your place?
When I was gone?
Yeah, who takes your place?
Basically Ruby was assisting me and she was helping me a lot in far as getting the inspection done. I think she might have done two or three inspections during the time that I was gone. I was still able to do and answer calls at home from home, you know. So we were still trying to keep it going. But Ruby did help me on that as far as getting some inspections done. I took over some. When I came back, then I took over that. But Ruby was the one that was assisting me on that.
Okay, but do you, is there another position? Do you have, I thought it was a two-person department? Is it a one-person department or a two-person department?
There's one, one, myself right now.
Just yourself? Okay.
And we're in the process of getting another person hired. We've already looked into that. I submitted a job description to the city secretary and then once it gets finalized, we'll put that in the website and put that in the paper as well to get my helper to come in to utilize that person, you know, get going in town.
Okay, do we know when that's going to happen?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know when that's going to happen?
Mr. Albiol, our finalizing the job description, it should be out next week or so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Albiol?
I have one question regarding the waste collection site. Are there any items that are prohibited that can't be disposed of there?
Yes, we have a brochure and most of the items that are prohibited would be paint, lubricants, tires, things like that. I don't know the whole list of that, but we do have a flyer that we can go and post and maybe we do give to the citizens. We have the prohibited items and then we have the accepted items in the brochure.
Okay, yeah, I visited the city's website earlier today because I had a couple items to get rid of myself. And I'm glad the schedule's there, it's got the hours and the days that it's open. But Mr. Jolene, you think we could also add that list just to give a little more information so that people know ahead of time? I think there's, there's something similar to that on the county's website for their waste collection facility. So it'd be good for us to have it as well.
We'll get that typed up and get that put on both the Facebook page and then we'll post it more permanently under a link on the website.
Okay, great, sounds good. Any other questions for Mr. Albiol? Thank you for your report.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to do the fall tire roundup this, this fall? Are we going to do the fall tire roundup?
As of right now, we can still schedule that, but it might be a little late in the year, but we can probably start it in the first of the year. But I still, I'll still begin with Liberty Tire and to see what we can get done as far as, we had, we had a small amount of tires that came in, but I think if we plan it way ahead of time, we can get a better, better turnout. So I'll get with Liberty Tire to see when they can be available, as soon as they can be available.
I did want to add to Mr. Albiol's comment about Aoka. At the moment, the third-party engineering doing the virtual inspections does meet ICC and the building code compliance. And they're not just based out of Dallas, they're also based out of San Antonio. So when those rare occasions come that we actually have to have an actual inspector onsite, they, they will send someone over from San Antonio. I just want you guys to know that.
I'm glad to hear that. This will speed up the process. I've heard a lot of frustration from residents and contractors alike, the process to get bogged down in pretty, pretty easily. And so anything that speeds it up, I think is good for the cities.
Very convenient, yes, sir.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Albiol.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Continuing under number nine, departmental reports, streets and parks report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening mayor, council. As far as the streets for the month of October, hand patching and grading, we graded and hand patched for eight days totaling out 50, 49.5 cubic yards of DS and also 8.5 cubic yards of wrap. And during the, during the seven-day stretch, we completed 166 potholes using 33.4 cubic yards of asphalt. And for the total of the month on asphalt being 82.9 cubic yards and 8.5 cubic yards of wrap. Also during the month, we worked on drainage for 10 days using 39.4 cubic yards of base with 17 bags of Portland cement to help stabilize some of them areas for erosion control and whatnot. Also during that time and working on some of that drainage, we removed 92 cubic yards of dirt and silt, swept a total of 11 days, mowed, weed-trimmed, and 24 different roadways during the month, repaired one sign, and we set out two temporary signs. We've been waiting on some of the materials to come in as far as replacing some of the stop signs and, and other signs throughout the city. We received our poles and stuff on Friday late, so we're going to be out replacing some of them, the stop signs that needed to be, to be replaced and also bringing up some of the stuff to standards. Some of the signage that we have within the city limits is actually below the state standards. So we're trying to little by little improve on that throughout the town. There's a lot of areas that are in need of different breakaway standards and not only the breakaway standards, but the retro reflective signage to help the visibility at night and so forth. We worked nine days cleaning out curbing gutters. We're scraping curbing gutters in different areas and trying to move along strategically in areas so then we can utilize the street sweeper to come along in and, and help some of the drainage areas. We have a lot of roadways that have built up silt over the years and you can see where the vegetation is starting to take over and stuff like that on the roadways in the curbing gutter areas. But it's just, one of the things is, it's kind of time consuming. You get in there and, and you're in there with the skid steer or the backhoe, sometimes the maintainer. And we're trying to remove the majority of that silt and vegetation and clean it out to try to keep the majority of the water backwards supposed to be in gutter areas instead of on the middle of the roadway out towards the quarter points and so forth. So that, that's a work in progress. So we're, we're working on that as well. Also removing trees and trimming trees. Sometimes we have issues where trees have fallen into the right-of-way or even into the roadway. So we, we hauled off 23 trailer loads of brush to the collection station. We replaced four trash carts. We delivered four new trash carts and picked up six trash carts during the month. Also picking up the trash in downtown and all the receptacles on 11 different days. With the PM program that we're trying to implement, we worked on PM two days during the month. And also worked out at, at the city park for six days in preparation of the homecoming bonfire at the time and removing some of the concrete forms that we had poured for the bench that's going to be placed under one of the oak trees and also in preparation for the fall festival. Currently, we're still down three employees. So we're, the guys are out there doing the best possible job we can and trying to be as efficient as we can. One thing I didn't put on there, but the grand road project on the paving has been completed. And on East Main, we're fixing to wrap it up right now. Dirt Boys and Elite are finishing up some of the items on the punch list. We have a couple of panels that need to be re-poured, but as far as East Main is concerned, we are seeing the finish line. So it's, it's a, it's a good thing. We're not quite there, but it's a lot closer to being complete than what we were, you know, a couple of months ago. We did add some sawtooth curbing in a couple of strategic areas and we had a lot of adjustments that we had to do with driveways just because of the way they were on the plan. That's what I have for the streets.
Questions from the council?
I have one question. I don't know if it really pertains to the street department. Do we have an update on when Center Point will be finished with their line replacement?
That's in District 3. Well, they're replacing gas lines and they're over here on Fifth Street now.
Yeah, no, I don't have an update as to when that's going to be completed yet. No, sir.
I had tried to contact, one of the contact numbers that I had with Center Point, just due to the fact I had spoken to Mr. Lynn about it, where they were doing some of the boring right there across from the flower shop in the Fuller Street. And I guess their boring rig came up a little bit early and punched a hole through our asphalt. So Mr. Lynn is aware of that and my concern is the integrity of the rest of the pavement and the base around it, meaning that you just dug a hole in brand new roadway surface. I know we had discussed trying to get them to come in here and either hot mix that portion or whatever. I know there's, there's days that I go out there and talk to some of the guys just because of where they're located, adjacent to the roadway without some of the signage and stuff like that. And they, they go out and they'll put up the signs. Some of the locations that they're at are, you know, that, that road's highly traveled as you know, and everybody else does. And sometimes it's difficult when they park their machinery and stuff like that. And I just noticed today, and I think they just punched a hole in Daly Street that I wouldn't worry that there had been punched right there by Mr. Benavides' house across from yours. So I'm, I'm not too sure when they'll be completed. I'm not too sure what the extent of all that was, is entailing, but, because we're also looking at getting the measurements for sidewalk from, from Main Street all the way up there to the intersection of 719 and Boreum. And after trying, you know, going in there and starting to do some of the measurements, we do have some sidewalk that goes through certain areas that I guess over the years has just been silted over. And I'm talking about six to eight inches of silt over the top of what we have as sidewalk. So and I'm going to get with Mr. Lynn and see exactly where we want to start and where we want to finish. Because right now, it goes all the way just past Mr. Benavides' house right there and then that's where it kind of did end. So from there on to 719 Boreum is, I don't know if you want to continue the, the sidewalk from that area or just start from new and see what we have. But that's a conversation that we'll have.
The sidewalk just basically kind of became buried over time.
Yes, sir.
And trying to uncover it so people can get some use out of it.
What's happening in a lot of areas is people are bringing in their own, their dirt and everything else to try to bring up their property and stuff. And then, well, if it doesn't establish the vegetation soon enough, you've got everything, all the silt running off. And that's what's happening on the roadways as well. And you have people that bring in, you know, dirt, topsoil, whatever it is. And if it doesn't, you know, get any type of vegetation growth, they don't seed it in time and manner and you don't get anything on it, well, the next thing you know, it's going to end up somewhere else. And that's, that's kind of one of the problems we're facing.
Got a question, Mr. Hernandez. On East Main, you said they're going through the punch list right now. I've recently had a lot of complaints about dirt moved around and just still kind of piled everywhere. I assume that's on the punch list to be?
That's also on the punch list. They're supposed to come back in and do some seeding. If it's, if it's in regards to being behind the, the curbing area, they're going back in and they're, they're putting the dirt in, they're running a, a little mini with the blade. They're blading it out. One of the other issues is, is they kind of jumped the gun in some areas and they started dropping in some of the material before the, the concrete curbing was poured. So now we, we, the concrete being poured, the, the guys that are actually doing all the forming and the concrete work are having to go back and dig up some of the soil and then that gets thrown every which way. That was another issue that we had with, down there at the end, towards the dead end where Center Point has that substation. We had spoken with them guys, they were supposed to have been out because we needed to pour some, some curbing in that area. And that job turned into a two-and-a-half day project instead of a, like a six-hour project. They found more than what they dealt with. But the thing was, is all the material, all the spores that they pulled out of the hole, they ended up putting on top of the concrete. Went down there, took pictures, talked with their forming that day, just to see if we could, to, to save a little bit of time and money, working with the contractor, with Elite, Dirt Boys, and with Center Point, seeing if they could take an early lunch because they were nowhere near getting done. But we had a concrete truck sitting there. When the concrete trucks sit there after a certain amount of time, they get hit with the demerge. So it's, it's by the minute. So for every minute they stay over, they get hit with the, with the pretty hefty little bill as far as money's concerned. But also the driver was needing to be on another job. And if they had to come back, all they had was a half-yard to pour, but then they get charged for the full 10-yard load, you know. And that turns into a costly amount. So I'm trying to work within Center Point with Dirt Boys and Elite to see if we can work out some stuff. We ended up getting it done that day and tried to help them out as best we could.
Not only along with dirt, but you know, where the driveways are going into properties? Because I know there's some elderly that have complained about having to get to their vehicles and just walking around the yard in that area. So I just wanted to confirm that it's not, we're very close to done.
We're close to done, yeah, no, no.
Nothing's going to be left.
A lot of that is on the punch list and a lot of it is in the properties. And then like I said, alongside of the, the curbing and gutter areas. But they still have a good ways as far as some of the handwork. A lot of it is the handwork. It's not any, any longer any of the, the concrete and materials and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the council?
When is the street sweeping done, sir?
We just now, or last week, we, we have the, the street sweeper inspected and we have tags for it. So we're good to go now. That's been, one of the things is how, I was under the impression we were good to go, but we had to have the, the vehicle inspected and with tags, state registration on it. So it's been there. We used it the one day at the parking lot there at the convention center and we've used it at the, the park itself. It hasn't made its presence on the roadway, but now that we're legal, here we go.
One, one more question. Dock Street, not sure what direction that would be. Not the side that attaches to, to Victoria, the opposite side of 72.
Going for Shaw.
I've had some complaints by the resident that lives there in the corner. And I don't know if you're the one to talk to about this, about street lighting. It is very dark down there and I confirm that it's, there was no streetlights. We've only got one on the corner of the opposite side, near that dumpster and trailer house area. What do we need to do about, how do we need to go about getting streetlights?
I'll talk to Mr. Lynn about it, but then I'll give you a call at AEP and see what can work out.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not wearing that camera. I, I know the process. I'm asking, I'm asking the city what their process is.
Our, our process is, we'll go ahead and I'll talk to Mr. Lynn about it. And I'll see what the, the, the protocol is to get that in the works.
I'll put them up, but that's a different matter.
Yes, sir. But that, we'll have to get with, with AEP or whoever actually services that, that area. And I'm not sure if it's AEP.
It's AEP, yes, sir.
But yeah, we can go through that and we'll, we'll take a look and see exactly where it can be placed and stuff like that.
Through some sort of request process or something similar?
Yes, sir, yes.
Does the resident need to do that or is that something we can do just by, you talking to Mr. Lynn?
We'll have to discuss that and, and see exactly how that's going to go. If it's going to go as a security lighting, that might be on the, the landowner's part. But if it's something that the city has, because we have so many different areas that do, you know, the lighting throughout town is built to the city.
We would pay for it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I just want to express my thanks for all the work that you and your, and the employees did at the city park. I was at the bonfire pepper alley and that was awesome. And the park looked in tip-top shape also for the fall festival. I've never seen the park look better, so appreciate all your efforts in getting prepared for those special events.
Them guys worked hard and they do a really good job.
They did. Thank you for your report, appreciate it.
I still have the park. Oh, that's right, parks.
Next, continuing on number nine on the agenda, Parks Report.
As far as the parks, the complex, the guys out there, they drove the field on 10 different occasions, removing trash from the receptacles on four days, as well as weed trimming around the fields themselves for 12 days. In the Kid Park and Pavilion, they weed-trimmed for 15 days, picked up trash on 23 days, hauled off branches and, and fallen limbs and stuff on three different days, cleaned up the Pavilion on 18 days. The Walking Trail Bridge Basketball Court in gazebo, they mowed, weed-trimmed around that area 15 days. Picked up trash around that area for 23 days, branches as well was three. Crew worked diligently on Crew worked diligently on getting everything ready for the Fall Festival, moving picnic tables, trash receptacles and stuff like that. Also on the Nottingham and soccer fields, they mowed and weed trimmed six days and also picked up trash for six days in that area. As far as, I don't have it on the report itself, but looking forward, we're hoping to start sometime either next week or the following week. And some of the earthwork in order to connect the two walking trails, it's been one of the things that I actually have interviews set up for tomorrow and Friday to try to staff up as much as possible in order to help us out. But that's been one of the things when, you normally on a typical day, you know, you have, you know, six guys at work, seven with me. We're trying to take care of everything that we have to deal with, and then, you know, we do have some other stuff that we'd like to take priority on. But sometimes the service orders just outweigh some of the stuff that we can get. So, we can, you know, we get a lot of the drainage issues is what we've been getting here lately. So, I'm doing the one calls in certain areas to do some of the drainage issues around town. But I'm gonna utilize the guys at the park to help us all around town as well. So, they're not gonna always be there at the park to do their job. They're gonna end up helping us out or we need help in different areas. Them guys are versatile, good group. The three guys that are out there do a phenomenal job, and they take pride in what they do. So, I want to bring that to the street department as well, them guys. Also, the Fall Festival, it was very successful with the vendors, the movie, and the hayride. The hayride was pretty much kind of like the knockout blow where the kids just, we kind of planned on only being out there with the hayrides for a certain amount of time. But every time we were wanting to kind of park that thing, we had a line of kids and even the adults. So, that one, you saw kids just having a really good time. My little one enjoyed it. I was kind of tired of trying to get up there with them. But, you know, when they're little, they've got that energy, and they just love riding on the back of something, you know. So, but I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in making the Fall Festival a success, all the employees that we had out there, and even the administration that was out there. I appreciate all the help.
Any questions from the council regarding parks? Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, if I may, I had hoped that the governing body would be able to get a photo op with Ms. Texas at the end. But she has a commitment. She's gonna need to leave. So, would it be okay, Mr. Mayor, if you all just took a quick break for a quick photo op with Ms. Texas? And that, and something we can put up in that so that she can go do what else she needs to do tonight?
Sure, absolutely. Do you want us to gather along this wall and say please?
Yes, sir. Right over there would be great. Thank you, sir.
Okay, no problem.
Ruby, you're up.
You're up. Matt, I'll get pictures for you too, okay?
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you so much for coming. We do appreciate you. Best of luck in the next.
Continuing on our agenda, item number nine, City Secretary Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilwoman. I wanted to let you guys know that the domain name kennetyexas.gov has been converted over, updated. Our website has now been switched. Our emails have also been switched, so your emails are now your district number at kennetytx.gov moving forward. At the moment, for the month of October, we did not have any new hires. We did have one separation, and every department is accepting applications at this time. For the event planning, I was hoping to have Mrs. Sharnes here with me so that she could come present to you and tell you what all she's been doing in regards to the activities for the Christmas in the park. But she isn't here this evening. But she is working on a multi-day event in December. And she did say something about vendors and food trucks and children activities. I know that she was purchasing some things today, but I would like for her to give that presentation to you at the next council meeting. As Mr. Hernandez did say, we did have the Fall Festival, and I do personally want to thank our staff members who were out there that evening volunteering and putting on that event. He is right. The hay festival, the hayride was a super hit. And I personally want to thank the volunteers who stayed on the hayride event that entire night to make sure the safety and well-being of the children on the ride was looked after. They walked the park the entire time or rode with the hayride as needed. If they had room, they sat. If not, they walked it. But they stayed with it the entire evening. And so, that was important that I wanted you guys to know that we did have the well-being of our citizens in mind in that event. And for utility billing, we had six new residential. We did not have any new commercial accounts for the month of October. We did have 11 residential disconnects and no commercial disconnects. The fire department did report that they had 11 service calls that they reported to for the month of October. Used 1,400 gallons of water and 25 personnel did respond to it. Municipal courts let me know that they had 160 defendants and collected 31,000 with a net to the city of 24,000. I also want to let you guys know that we are an official drop-off location for Karnes County Toys for Tots. We do have a box out in the foyer. So, if anyone, and I do urge citizens as well, if you guys would like to bring toys in for Karnes County, they will be by to pick up to distribute accordingly.
And the dates for Kennedy Christmas in the Park, that's the 4th, the 11th, and 18th?
Right now, that is what we were looking at. I know Mrs. Sharnes was saying something about it potentially being the 4th and the 11th because she's trying to do vendors for kind of like a market days. And the 4th and the 11th looks like those are the most popular dates for the vendors to come out. So, it may be a two-day weekend, but right now, I know she is just adjusting things according to responses that she's given from vendors.
And the Kennedy High School band's still gonna be there for music?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Both of them.
Good. Any questions from the council?
Yes, I wanted to ask a few good questions. In regards to Toys for Tots, is there going to be an evening where they wrap these gifts? Or do you know if anything like that is going on, almost like an El Polis kind of like project?
Well, since we're only a collection location, I don't have any further information on that.
That will actually be done by JP.
Daisy Villamoye?
Three.
Yeah, her staff is the wrapping.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further questions from the council?
What's the deadline for Toys for Tots? As far as if anyone wants to donate, what's the final cutoff date? Do we know?
I don't, but I can follow up with you between now and the next council meeting, and I'll report that on the next one as well.
Or, I mean, maybe if we could just put it like on the Facebook page and website, that way anybody that does want to donate, they know what, how much, you know, time they have.
Okay, I can take care of that.
I think in the past, they've set up in front of Walmart too, a couple of weeks in advance or maybe three weeks in advance. But, yeah, any information that we can share on the Facebook page or the city's website would be great.
Okay, no problem.
They're actually meeting tonight. They're planning a meeting right now for all that, and so I should have more tomorrow. I'll pass it on. But we'll participate again at Walmart like we did in the past. They're planning a meeting the same time.
Oh, good. Glad to hear that.
But I'll know more tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report. Brings us to item number 10 on the agenda, City Management Report. Mr. Lynn? First section of the report is current projects, future projects, current operations, and/or future operations.
Good evening, Mayor. Council. Do you mind if I take this off?
Sure.
So, it's already been mentioned tonight a couple of times about some of the projects that we have. The Graham Road Milling has been completed. Graham Road proves to be our template for the five roads we're looking at doing, one in each of your districts throughout this fiscal year. So, that's kind of what we would like to see the result look like at each of the roads you all have submitted to me to give to Mr. Hernandez for us to begin the process with that. So, it looked really good. I was really pleased with Dirt Boys and the job that they did on that, how quickly they got on that and got that taken care of. They didn't waste any time getting it done. I was very thankful for that for Dirt Boys for on that. So, I thank you to the council for allowing us to do that there. East Main, before we do much with East Main, Mr. Hernandez is gonna take a look at East Main floors. And whenever the, Mr. Orin, who is the representative for Mont McDonald now thinks that they're substantially complete, they're gonna let me know. When they let me know, I'm going to reach out to several of you. I know we need to take a walk and talk down at East Main. We're gonna do that just us and maybe Mr. Hernandez without any outside individuals. In other words, I'm not gonna invite Dirt Boys or Mont McDonald down. We just need to walk and talk ourselves and look it over and pick anything apart that we don't like ourselves. And then, Mr. Hernandez and I will go to Dirt Boys and Mont McDonald and let them know what is unacceptable and what they need to change before we release the retching. So, just to let you all know that's where we are on that. So, if I get three of you together, we'll post a notice of potential forms that are legal. We'll take care of all that, okay? The Cruz River Water Line is coming along. We're still waiting on the parts to come in. Those first set of parts are supposed to be done in this month, so they won't be until later. So, we don't have much there on that right now. The convention center, Mr. Berger came down, and he went to the convention center, and he did his little look over the convention center thing, get his ideas, do his measurements. Him and his team did all of that, and then went back to Victoria so they could begin putting together the ideas for plans based upon what they saw with the council and Mayor had expressed, with the residents had expressed at our workshop. So, they're gonna begin working on all that. So, we probably will not hear from Mr. Berger until he has at least one rendering to show us. So, until that happens. Now, it'll take maybe a month or two for him to get that. So, but he is moving along with that, so we are moving in that direction. We are also going to be reaching out to several municipalities, some local, some more than local away, to price compare. And what we're gonna be looking at is we're gonna be looking at a couple of different price points on a convention center. One is what I'm gonna call a basic package, which is I just get a room, and there's water, and you go serve yourself the water, and that's about it. And the other is gonna be rent the room with catering, and we're gonna try to figure out how these other places are charging so we can start putting together a list. We've kind of made this kind of a priority because we're starting to get some feedback from people in the community and outside of the community wanting to see if they can rent it now. And while we would love to just turn it over and start renting it now, we need to know what we're charging because the $100 that we charge for this room is certainly not gonna be what we're gonna charge out there. So, we are in the process of doing that. So, y'all already know what we're doing on that. We did do the eight-inch waterline extension. The contract has been signed for that, and the notice to proceed on that was issued on November the 5th. And they were given until February 3rd to complete that project. That eight-inch waterline project, that is the project where we're coming off the tower out by KISD and etching up along the east that we have for the 172 unit apartment complex that comes to Fifth Street. And then coming up the front of, sorry, to 181, coming up 181, it's right by Gories. We're putting in, as Mr. Higgins has already told you all in the past, we're putting in a fire hydrant right there at the property line between this apartment complex and Gories. That's where we're gonna put one in. We also are gonna put in a second fire hydrant right at the corner where the water line comes up and hits 181 before 90's up 181. We're gonna put another fire hydrant right there as well. We'll get with Mr. Kempton later as we start to do this to try to get an idea of when he's gonna be ready to start breaking ground on the apartment complex. I know he has a little bit of issue with text out right now, getting some ingress and egress approvals because of location where he wants to put his ingress and egress. So, but we're still working with him on that as well. So, that project's moving along. I will tell you that Mr. Kempton and his whole group are still very excited as to how quickly we have gotten them to this point when previously it had taken nine years just to get somebody to figure out how to get them water. So, which was pretty interesting, but that's okay. Where we are today, if things are, we're gonna work on it. I was just speaking to Mr. Wiliger a while ago about something. One of the things that I was thinking about doing is, one of the things I've learned about Kennedy in the 21 months I've been here roughly is that each and every one of you sitting at this bench tonight are completely community-centric. And that's great. That's, you should be. Kennedy is a very community-centric town. Each of the residents in this town, it does not matter what part of the city they hail from, it's all about Kennedy. It's all about community. It's all about us, if I can use that term. And so, one of the things that I thought about the other day, and it was my downfall when I gave them Mr. Wiliger before tonight. I just spoke to her, and she's gonna speak to the chamber, and the chamber is gonna discuss doing this. One of the things I'd like to see us do as a group, and if the chamber board approves it, I'd like to see a tri-union here. I'd like to see a union between the city council, or should I say the governing body, the chamber, and the EDC. And what I would like to do and present to the three audience, oh, sorry, that's my Pittsburghies coming out. Y'all. Is every month, what we would do is we would have a small business of the month dedication. We would do a plaque. I don't like to use the word canned speech, but pretty much it would be, you know, talk about them being the business of the month. And the thing that would change every month would be the month and year, and then the business's name. But then at the bottom of the plaque, it would have imprinted each of your names and your position with the governing body in one column. And in one column, it would have Mr. Wiliger and all the board members of the chamber. And in another column, it would have Mr. Richards and all of the members of the EDC, and it would actually state which column, who's who. And then we would present this to a business at any council meeting, i.e. we'll just, for hypothetical reasons, say December. And what would happen is Mayor Baker would present a proclamation, naming December the month of AEC company in the city of Kennedy. Present the proclamation, present the plaque, maybe take a photo op for everybody, and then let them stand at the podium and give a little spiel about their business, who they are, what they do here in Kennedy, and how they benefit the residents, or something like that. And I thought maybe, you know, this would be a great way to bring the three major community organizations together doing something to move everything forward, showing, you know, thanks and love to our small businesses. The United States, as everybody knows, was built on the backs of the small business network. The Walmarts, the K-Marts, the Crafts, the Getty Oils, the Rockefellers, none of them existed. The Walmarts, the K-Marts, the Crafts, the Getty Oils, the Rockefellers, none of them existed. They didn't really build this country. This country was built on the backs of the small business owners. And so, anything I believe we can do to help them out or to throw love their way, so to speak, as my kids tell me, I thought it was a great idea. But it was my fault for not speaking with Mr. Wiliger before tonight. Again, I take our responsibility for that. I didn't want, I don't want to step on anyone's toes because I want us all to be in this together because truly, we all rode the same direction in this vote. Anyway, I just want to let you know so that if she gets back with me before December and they're all thumbs up on doing it on the December agenda, you'll see something like that. And it'll be a recurring item that will be on the agenda permanently. It will be in the front part of the section, kind of where Mayor Baker does the proclamations and the awards and that kind of stuff before we get the citizens' comments. So, just wanted to let the council know that we were looking at that, okay?
Sounds like a great idea. For one, would like to learn more about the businesses in our community. It's an opportunity to learn more about them. I think that'd be good for everything. Kennedy is a very business, as a former business owner here in Kennedy, it's a very business-friendly city. And I think anything we can do to let people outside of Kennedy know that, I think would be time well spent. So, Jolie, does this sound like something the chamber would be interested in partnering?
I think so. What we currently do is actually member of the month, so we focus strictly on our membership, which is not every business in Kennedy. But I think it would be nice to see the chamber be able to also recognize all the small businesses because they are still part of the business community, obviously. So, I can't say for sure I have to run it, but I've worked.
Right.
We'll meet next Tuesday as long as I can get a quorum, and I'll get back with Mr. Lynn. We'll definitely have an answer.
That's great. Let's see, let's see how it goes along then. Appreciate it.
Good, super. And then one last thing I wanted to mention is, as everyone notices tonight, and all the residents who are watching were wondering what was going on when Mayor Baker was up there with the blue envelopes and all of that. On October 25th, Representative Ryan Julian came to the city of Kennedy to meet with me and the staff, and we were talking about things. And I was not expecting his visit because I was not paying attention to what was going on in the state. And apparently Governor Abbott redistricted the state, so we were under Mr. Cryer. And so, when everything changes, we will now have Mr. Julian as our House Representative person going forward here in Karnes County. His staff and himself, I thought would be very nice, very accommodating. They were, it was all about us. And when I say us, it's not just us here in Kennedy, it's all about Karnes County. What can we do for you? How can we help you? What can we do? And I did find that tonight, it was, uh, tonight's event really solidified the words. Missouri's state motto is, "They're the show-me state. You can talk all you want, but put your money where your mouth is." Tonight, moments before this meeting tonight, Mr. McVay from Mr. Julian's office drove all the way down here from Austin, Texas just to deliver those resolutions. Just to make sure we had those resolutions tonight for Mayor Baker to give out. So I thought that, I was very impressed with that. You just don't see that from the higher ups a lot. So, but anyway, we did meet with him. I do have one of his business cards left over, which I will take a snapshot of and email to all of y'all so that you have that, but just to let you know what the redistricting. That is why Mr. Julian was presenting these resolutions tonight on Mr. Cryer because he is the incumbent. So, just to let you all know that. Other than that, is there anybody having, do you want to ask about anything before I move on to the financials?
Any questions? Let me counsel.
I've got a question, Mr. Lynn.
Sir?
Last month, I asked about the training, if there was any type of certificate pay, pay raise, whatever you want to call it. Any update on that, how that's going?
Still working on it.
Any idea when it might get done?
It takes a little while to get the open records request in from the other municipalities so we can see what they're doing, so we can make sure we're in line. I mean, I could sit down and try to figure it out myself and have it probably done within a week. But given the history of the council and council's wishes on a lot of things, I believe you all would rather we do a little bit more due diligence on it. I don't want to seem apathetic on it, but I'm not concerned about it because I've already authorized it to go retroactive. So if we do 50 bucks a month, all these guys that have had it all this time, they're going to see a little bit extra on their check other than the 50 dollars a month. So we're going to take care of it, buddy.
It is in the process, and I did receive a few more in today, cities that were comparable to our size. So we are working on it.
Any questions from the council before we move on to financials? If not, then Mr. Lynn, please continue.
Okay. So, we are in budget month number one, and we're looking at a peg of about 8.33 percent this month. It's a brand-new year for us. So as we begin, we'll start with our liquidity. The general fund was at 2.989. The hotel motel tax is at 1.026. The water and sewer is at 853. And the paid fund is at 2.449. That gives us a total of 7.318 in our tax pull account. And then at the date with which I prepared these financials, there was 1.955 in the bank, which gave us a total available liquidity of 9.274. And that is about 6.85 months' worth of expenditures. So, we're very solid with where we are financially. As we move into the revenue side, we took in $630,000 in the general fund, which amounted to 7.95 percent of the budget. We were looking at 8.33 percent, so we're just barely underperforming by less than, you know, 100 to, you know, 800 to 100 percent. So, we're pretty close on that. We spent $558,000 in the general fund, which has us at 7.07 percent. Again, we're pegging to 8.33 percent. So, we're outperforming our budget there as we spend less than we took in. The water and sewer account, we took in $736,000, which was 8.83 percent. So, they outperformed their budget there on revenues. And then they spent $457,000, which was 5.48 percent, so they outperformed there. Overall, we netted an outperformance of 8.4 percent on revenues. We netted a 6.25 percent outperformance on the expenditures. And we're currently outperforming the budget as a whole right now, one month into it. So, we're actually going pretty good right now. But it's only the first month.
Questions? Any questions?
One thing I'd like to add before I conclude, one of the things, and I'm almost still some of Ms. Miles is standing here. One of the things that I have been looking at for a long time in the city of Kennedy is an Assistant Public Works Director. And I've identified an individual who we are bringing to board. We've issued a, an offer letter to him. He has accepted. And the great thing about this particular individual is it goes back to a question the counselor signs asked. This individual also has experience doing code, so we will be able to utilize him. And if Mr. Albiar is out, we'll be able to have him there to help out as a backup there as the main code person. So, just wanted to let you all know that as well. And yes, it was a budgeted out.
Okay, any other questions?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Brings us to number 11 on the agenda, Consent Agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council where little or no discussion is anticipated. By a single motion, second, and affirmation, majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item A, Consideration and Approval of Special City Council Meeting and City Council Workshop Minutes of August 20th, 2021. City Council Public Hearing Minutes of September 14th, 2021. Regular City Council Meeting Minutes of September 14th, 2021. And City Council Workshop Meeting Minutes of September 21st, 2021. Item B, Consideration and Approval on Financials. Is there any discussion on the agenda item number 11, Consent Agenda? Not out of the entertainment motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, and a second from Councilmember Sines. And Ms. Malski, if you'll please call the rule.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
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 All voters in favor, motion carries. Next section of the agenda is Ordinance, Resolution, Other Action Items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. Item 12, Presentation by Cindy Metro with Langford Community Management Services for Section 3 Presentation for the Texas CBPG Contract. Ms. Metro?
So this is for the grant that you received for the sewer project. The money comes from HUD, and then it goes to the Texas Department of Agriculture. And what this is, is it's talking about Section 3. And Section 3 is really giving opportunities to low- to moderate-income persons. So during the construction process, they really want us to help the contractor focus on either hiring a Section 3 people, or if they already have Section 3 people, making sure that they're working on this job. There, you can also be a Section 3 business. If the majority of your workers are Section 3 workers, then you qualify as a Section 3 business. We also have to advertise this opportunity for the contractor. When you go to construction, it has to be put on HUD's Section 3 portal. So we have to advertise it there as well. We also have to track all of the hours on the project. So, all of the total construction hours, and then all of the hours for the Section 3 workers. So we look at the payrolls. We have a Labor Standards Officer. She gets all the payrolls. She will review all the payrolls. She will identify who's Section 3 based on what they're getting paid. And then she'll start tracking those hours that way. So, that's basically it. They're requiring us to give presentations to council just so that you're aware of that, that they're trying to reach out to those people and get them jobs. So, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the council? Thank you for your presentation and the materials that were submitted. Appreciate it. Brings us to item number 13, Consideration and Possible Action in Regard to Resolution 21-14. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy Regarding Citizen Civil Rights, Adopting a Citizen Participation Plan and Grievance Procedures, Adopting a Job Training, Employment, and Contracting Opportunities Policy for Section 3 Residents and Businesses, Adopting an Excessive Force Policy, Adopting a Non-Discrimination and Grievance Policy, Adopting a Conflict of Interest and Code Conduct Policy, Adopting a Limited English Proficiency Plan, Adopting a Fair Housing Policy, Providing a Repealing Clause, Providing Perseverability, Providing for Proper Notice and Meeting, and Providing an Effective Date. Mr. Lynn, give a presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor, Mayor. Okay, so Resolution 21-14, essentially Ms. Metro's presentation on Section 3. This is the resolution that we have to adopt for the Section 3 requirements that we have to do, the civil rights and the, all those policies that Mayor Baker read. But that is what the gist of this is. This is required in order for us to move forward with the grant.
Any questions from the council or discussion? If there's no further question or discussion, I would entertain a motion on Agenda Item Number 13.
I will make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.
Motion from Councilmember Douglas. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Malski, will you call the rule?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voters in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 14, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Resolution 21-15. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy, Texas, Designating Authorized Signatories for Contractual Documents and Documents for Requesting Funds Pertaining to the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, Contract Number 7220140, Providing a Repealing Clause, Providing Perseverability, Providing for Proper Notice and Meeting, and Providing an Effective Date. Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir. Okay. We're going to, on this one right here, before I go, we're going to, if you all adopt this, we're going to adopt it as amended. Contract number, that was sent to me on that, had two different contract numbers on it. Had a contract number in the, in the original portion of preamble. And it also had a different contract number on the actual signatory page. So, what's, the one contract number is a contract that is for the GLO grant. The other contract number is a contract for the Texas CBPG grant than this, Ms. Finney was speaking on. So, what we'll have to do is we'll have to adopt this as amended, and I'll seek to it that the proper number is changed to the proper number afterwards. But essentially what this is doing is establishing signatories for the contract documents and more or less the banking and things of that nature that goes along with all the wonderful joys of a grant. And if you look at the very last page, it has it listed with Mayor Baker, myself, Councilwoman Sines, and City Secretary of Revenue, Ms. Malski, as the individuals. What this does is this provides us a lot of latitude to get things signed in a hurry if we need it. So, and again, this is something we have to do if we want to use the funds, so.
Mr. Lynn, what would be the correct?
I'll need to figure it out because it came, the document came in with the two different numbers on it. So I'll give it to Ms. Finney this night for tomorrow. I wanted to figure out if this was for the CBPG one over here, or if it was actually for the GLOs. So, but we'll get that taken care of, so. Any questions? Very good, thank you.
Any questions or further discussion on Agenda Item 14 by the council?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 21-15 with the proper changes and improvements.
Have a motion. Councilmember Rodriguez, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Malski, will you call the rule?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voters in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 15, Consideration and Possible Action in Regard to Letter of Intent from the City of Kennedy for a Tech Dot Aviation Airport Development Grant for an Extension of the Taxiway on Runway and Tea Hangars. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, Mayor. Okay, as you all know, the Kennedy Regional Airport has been named Airport of the Year, or at least last year. We did a lot of renovations out at the airport, a lot of lighting and runway things and that. So now the next thing is, we have to look at doing is adding tea hangars in order for us to be able to have more planes housed there and generate some revenue. But in order to do that, we have to extend the taxiway. Not extending the taxiway or runway, but extend the taxiway to the hangars so that airplanes can get from the hangars to the runway. So, what happens is Tech Dot puts on a lot of these grants, and they're going out three, five years for their grants. So this letter of intent basically just says, this is... So this letter of intent basically just says, this is what we want to do, and we want to be put in queue for you guys to give us grant money in order to do these things. So that's, that's what this letter is for right now, is just more or less tell Tech Dot, we want your money.
Any questions from the council? For those of us who may not be that familiar with airports and airport technologies, is a T hangar basically a garage for an airplane?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is. And we charge a monthly fee for them to park there a little bit of time, sir.
Rent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions from the council? I would entertain a motion on number fifteen. I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Fifteen. A motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voters in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, consideration of possible action in regard to Resolution twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy designating the Karnes Countywide as the official newspaper of the City of Kennedy, Texas, for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Mayor. Okay, so every year, at different times of year, there's certain things that we have to do, and we're supposed to do them at certain times, and that's my fault, so I apologize for that. First of October, at the first beginning of every budget year, you are supposed to, at your first council meeting thereafter, pick a newspaper. The Karnes-Carden, the count.
Karnes Countywide.
Thank you. That was good. Has traditionally been the paper of the City of Kennedy. I just would like to say, you don't always have to use that particular paper. The Attorney General has opined that the word "published," and that's a key word papers like to use when they're saying, oh, that's not published in your county. The word "published" has been defined as distributed. So anytime we're talking about papers, you see the word "published," it's equivalent to the word "distributed." So technically, if you go down here to the Circle K, whatever papers are on the stand, the council could choose any of those papers to be the official paper of the City of Kennedy. Okay? It's just a little bit of background. What we're doing tonight is, I caught it after the meeting last month, that I had failed to put it on the agenda, for you guys to name the Karnes Countywide as the official paper of Kennedy. That is why this is on here, so you can take care of that right away, but it is an annual thing that we have to do, so.
Any questions from the council? Any discussion regarding Agenda Item Number Sixteen? Thank you, Mr. Lynn. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion on Number Sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve Item Number Sixteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Sines and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voters in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, consideration of possible action in regard to Resolution twenty-one dash thirteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy, selecting a nominee to be considered in the December twenty twenty-one Texas Coalition for Affordable Power Board of Directors election, to serve as a director for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three term, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so TCAP is an organization with which the City of Kennedy is a member of, and what they do is more or less, they go out and they, they purvey electricity, and they use economies of scale by using all their members as their base to drive down the electric price for the municipalities, and they're supposed to get the least expensive kilowatt per hour, and then that's who everybody that's a member uses. So, for example, we use JEXA as our provider. AEP owns the lines, but we, JEXA's who provides our energy, and that's who all the TCAP members use, is JEXA. So if they were to go out and say, find direct energy was the cheapest, then everybody would switch to direct energy. They do have a board of directors that governs them. So I received an email, which I, we put in your packets, and that email basically was wanting to know if, you know, since we're a member, we could nominate somebody to be on, well, we could nominate somebody to be up for election, to be on their board of directors. Okay? And it can be anybody, it can be any one of the six of you, it can be any full-time staff member that you choose. So we put this on the agenda tonight for you guys to decide, number one, if you want to participate or have a representative participate in that, and number two, for who would you want it to be. There's a couple of meetings that would have to be attended in person, which the stipends are paid for doing that, and there's a few meetings on the phone you would have to attend if you so desire. Anyway, that's why it's on here, it's for you guys to decide.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council or discussion on Agenda Item Number Seventeen?
If you want to be on, on it? Chris, you're the, you're the power guy. You're the, you're the power guy. I pay my electric bill, I mean, there's some solar, some water, some wind, you know, that's about all I know about energy, so.
Is that something that, would that be a conflict of interest if you're working for a CP and tenured board, you could pay me for a conflict or?
I would have to look into that. I don't see why they would, because we own the line regardless of who the provider is, so you're not gonna, you know, regardless of who your provider is, you're still getting it from us and around the way, you know. Hope to give a lot of free time these days. No, I don't have a lot of free time. I keep adding and adding and adding.
Is there any other interest on the council in serving or?
Mr. Lynn, is that something you could do? Do you want to do it?
It is something I can do, and if the council so desires for me to go on there, I would be willing to serve. Again, this is just the first, it is the first step, you gotta be elected, so if the council so desires to nominate me.
I'll nominate you.
Put that in formal motion?
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve Item Seventeen and name Mr. Lynn as the nominee.
I'll second.
We have a motion. Councilmember Sines and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voters in favor, motion carries. Item eighteen, this item's tabled from the October twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, repealing the city's Parks and Recreation Board ordinance of March twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-two, and abolishing the Parks and Recreation Board, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixty-six, Parks and Recreation, Article Two, Parks and Recreation Board, providing a repealer, providing for a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so last month at the council meeting, we discussed this, and there was a general consensus from the government body that, one, you really wished to know what the EDC really had to say about it, and you had hoped that Mr. Richards would have been present, but he was unable at that night. The EDC met later that month with this item on their agenda, and they voted unanimously to pull the Parks and Rec Board underneath them, with all current members being in their current capacities, their current terms. So with that, I had asked Mr. Richards if he would show up this evening for the city council meeting, in case you all had any specific questions you wanted to ask him regarding this. So at this point in time, I'll yield the floor to Mr. Richards and the council.
Thank you for being here, Gary, and being patient for these first two hours.
Yes. We did go ahead and vote on that, so pending the outcome of this resolution, if you approve it, then they were, they are already in place and they will automatically fall with under the 4B Corporation. If you vote against it, then we are just where we were before, and everything continues on as it was.
Any questions from the council? I have one, is there any opposition to this by any of the current Parks Board members or the Chair of the Parks Board? Hello, nice to see you back there, Ken. Well, that's good to know, okay. Any questions from the council, any further discussion?
That was my main question, is how the, you know, one, how does the Parks Board feel about it? And two, it would be my understanding that if this is approved, that 4B would then appoint any members to the Parks Board, right, going forward, that's the?
To be honest with you, I really see them as more of an autonomous group that we cut out some steps, you know, getting budgets approved and all, but will, you know, unless they just, you know, appoint somebody presently in jail, which I don't see them doing, I don't see any problem with, you know, them being able to go ahead and decide who they'd like and all. I don't really see us interfering with them and their operations, and so I see them pretty well operating as they are now. We've just saved some steps in the process and being able to get things done and all.
Yeah, I mean, as we all know, it's hard, so hard to find people to give their time, you know, and when you do find people, you want to hang on top, because it's hard to replace them, you know? I mean, some of the, some, a lot of people, you know, me growing up, you see people on these boards and committees, and they're on there for year after year after year after year after year, and you always think, you know, man, why do they, why do they work so hard? And then you start trying to find people that want to do what they do, and it's like nobody wants to do it. So that, I mean, that was one of my biggest concerns, was ensuring that, you know, the people that are in place, you know, want this to happen so that we can continue to utilize them with all the work that they do.
You said there was no opposition?
There was no, there was only, Ms. Matthews was not too happy about it, just too along with it, that was not it.
I've heard quite a bit of opposition to it.
Oh, really? Well, I'm talking about the four members who showed up and talked about it. I haven't heard from anybody else except Ms. Matthews. Ms. Matthews wasn't too happy, but if it was gonna happen, it's gonna happen. I don't know about anybody else. What's up to you? We'll go, however, the ones that are on the board that I've heard from, they, they'll keep on working the way the world will work, and whatever y'all decide. We have projects that we need done, and wherever you decide to put us, we'll keep on doing our job.
What was the opposition?
And that was one of the reasons we went ahead with this, is rather than waiting for the city council to do something, then us do something, they've got important work to do. And so we went ahead and approved, formed a subcommittee and moved the members over so they can continue working. They're trying to get the trail redone out at Joe Gully, they're trying to get a walking trail done up at St. Mary's, they're trying to get some other things done with the gazebo and all, and so they've got important work to do, and I didn't want them in a perpetual suspension while we're all trying to decide what to do, so. As of, as of tonight, we'll go one way or the other, and we'll continue going forward either way.
Excuse me?
Get back.
Your group was a unanimous yes?
And just to clarify, what you anticipate happening when it comes to filling a board vacancy on the Parks Board, then the Chair of the Parks Board will bring you recommendations from the board itself, and like I said, unless there's some extraordinary circumstances, 4B Board will approve that nomination.
And I guess there was one question about what if a future 4B Board decided to get rid of the Parks Boards? And really, while the Economic Development Corporation is an independent body, we're owned by the city, and the city has certain controls over us. And if some future Board should decide to get rid of the Parks and Recreation Board, all the city council would have to say is, no, you aren't. And if they said, well, then we'll just go ahead and appoint 4B members to the Board, and then we'll never hold a meeting, again, the city council could say, no, you aren't. I mean, because we are owned by the city, and the city, you know, people that own it got some say-so and things, so. And then in some future time, if the council should decide that they would like to go back under the city manager, all they have to do is resend this ordinance, and we can back to what it was, so. But like I said, I'm talking about some Board in the future, Suzanne and I have a great working relationship. She lets me know what they're doing, and I'm trying to help her get whatever she wants to do, so. But, so we're talking some hypothetical thing in the future. But we fully support them, and we want them to do well.
I'd like to, my hope is, if the council approves this, that it will be a more cooperative relationship between the Parks Board and 4B, and I think in the past, they've both been somewhat focused on parks improvements, and I'd like to see 4B transition to economic development, bringing new businesses and new jobs to this community, which we desperately need. So if this is a way, if this is a method for us to divide those responsibilities so that the Parks Board can focus on parks, 4B can focus on economic development, then I think it's good for the community.
Right, and we're, 4B's in the process of getting a website, and in some future, we may get an economic development coordinator of some sort, park governmental time. We're already looking at ways of what to do with downtown, since it's more empty than full. And so we, we've been working on those sort of things as well, and since the Larry Keasling Youth Complex has gotten finished, and the Ask Adido Creek Project has gotten finished, that gives us a chance now to focus more on economic development.
Any other questions from the council or discussion?
I want to thank Mr. Lynn for inviting me, letting me know about the Economic Development Conference that I will be attending on Thursday and Friday at Astrop. And as I look through the agenda, some of them are just dead on what we are looking at right now, so I want to thank you for that.
I was visiting the U.S. Census website earlier today, and they've got the twenty-twenty numbers for Kennedy in there, and our population has increased considerably since twenty-ten, so I don't know if that could be a drawing card for potential businesses or industry or anyone who might want to locate Kennedy and provide some jobs for the local community, but I think it's a good thing. The community's growing, it's grown over the last ten years, we've been through some up and down cycles, and so I'd like to see economic development, your efforts with 4B are much appreciated, and thank you for being here this evening as well.
Hey, Theo's?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any discussion? And if there's some further discussion, I would entertain a motion at this point for Agenda Item Number 18.
I'll make a motion to approve Item Number, Ordinance Number 21-16.
That motion from Councilmember Sines, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Malice, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilman Dennis Douglas?
We have two votes in favor, three votes opposed. Motion failed. Agenda Item Number 19, tabled from October 12, 2021, consideration of possible action in regard to Ordinance Number 21-17, an ordinance amending the water and wastewater fee schedule for commercial customers inside and outside the city limits, providing a repealer, providing for a separability clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Lynn?
Okay. Again, this is a carryover item that was tabled from last month, so we had to put it back on the agenda this month with the commercial water rates. Just one more time, I just want to reiterate one thing, we're only talking commercial, not residential, so any residents out there listening to this can put their fears to rest, this is just commercial only, so... But again, this was mandated by the last meeting, so...
Any questions for Mr. Lynn from the council, or any discussion on Agenda Item Number 19?
Do you need to say one thing, Mayor, if you don't mind? Regardless of which way council goes with this, and it's your choice, as you're the council, you need to keep one thing in mind, okay? We're digging a water line, and we're pulling water from a property that we do not own. We do not own the water rights. We are under a lease agreement with this individual, and the moment we start pulling water from there, it's going to cost us $375,000 a year to have access to our water. So please keep that in mind. These water rates going up for the commercial go a long way to help offset that cost.
I said at the last meeting, I don't see a problem raising the rates on commercial. I'm very glad we're not raising the rates on residential. That's my two cents, I'm okay with it.
Can you explain maybe why they're having to do this?
Well, okay, so let me start by saying this one more time. As I believe the consensus of this council is, we will eventually move towards a static sewer charge for the residents, okay? I believe that's the right thing to do to get off this variable sewer charge for the residents, something we will take up later, not right now. The reason we're doing this now is to be preemptive for the future. The way I have envisioned this, when I looked at this, was the City of Kennedy has not raised any rates permanently for many, many, many years, and if we did not have certain businesses, if you will, that were in the area, there is no way we could do one-third of what we're doing in this town right now. The numbers just don't add up. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to establish something that's going to give us a little bump today, but something that we don't have to come back next year and do it again, or the year after and do it again. This is something we can do today that we may not have to revisit for three, four years down the road. So, you know, that's wise, to help generate extra funds for such things as this lease payment that I've mentioned. The extra funds definitely could go in, be folded back into water line replacements, or sewer line replacements, or street repairs, the main infrastructure items in the town. It'll definitely provide enough money to add more of that going forward, and I think with this budget year, as you all see, we've become pretty aggressive with putting in there specifically for this stuff this year to make it be identified as to what we're doing. And I really think that the city would like to see more of that, but in order to do that, we need to generate larger sums of money in order to do that. Just merely cutting a line item here or there isn't going to do it for us.
And just to refresh my memory, your projected revenue increase if the council chooses to approve this?
As of October 1st, if it had gone into effect October 1st, we had gotten a full year out of it, the projected revenue increase would have been right about $1 million.
About $1 million?
Yes, sir.
For a year?
Yes, sir. So it's actually just less than a 10% increase in our revenues.
What are surrounding municipalities charging for commercial rates?
They're all over the board for it. The spreadsheet I sent you guys had everybody basically in the state of Texas on it, and when you're looking at these things, I know everyone likes to look local, but you really can't compare to locals, because Three Rivers is a different municipality than us, they don't necessarily have the same number of people, they don't have the same budget, they don't have the same number of water connections, you know, we have to look at all these different things as to what's going on. And right now, the City of Kennedy is the hub of Karnes County, basically. This is where you go to shop in this area, this is where you go to do anything. We are so geographically strategically positioned, it's just unbelievable. If anyone really is going to blow up and grow, it'll be Kennedy. And that's not just because I sit in this seat, I saw that before you guys hired me. So that's, you know, we have to charter our own course in this one.
Here's how I feel about it. Inflation happens, prices go up, we see that right now at the gas pump. A million-dollar increase sounds great for the city, but the trickle effect of that is going to be a more expensive hamburger, more expensive fries, which are already going up because of inflation. So now these small business owners, for example, Bars Glorious, have been around for a long time, are having to raise their costs, potentially lose customers, and now we're going to hit them again with a higher bill. I'm not saying inflation doesn't happen, it will, it affects everybody, but with everything else going on, I don't think an extra $1 million in our account is going to tremendously benefit us. I mean, yes, it will benefit us, but I don't see how we desperately need an extra $1 million. I'd be more comfortable with half of this amount, a smaller increase. I talked to a lot of people over the last month, and, you know, people always say, people that know me know that I love Starbucks coffee. I don't buy it every day, but a lot of places where people get coffee every day are not going to pay more. I mean, it's going to affect everybody, not just those that live in Kennedy, anybody that shops here, and I just, I don't know.
I would like to go on record as a small business owner here in Kennedy, 16 years in the same place, commercial building downtown. I'm just saying I don't like it a single bit, but I'm going to take one for the team. I hate it. COVID affected us tremendously. But you have to get the revenue where it is, and if it hits the commercial people, then...
My two cents?
That's it. I'm willing to pay the extra. We flush commode six times a month. I don't water grass, I don't do anything, but you know what? I'm a business owner. It's part of owning a business. I hate it, I can't really afford it, but I'll pay it.
Cost of everything is going up, and it's gone up pretty dramatically just recently, and we can't lock down, we can't keep the rates at the same rate for 10 years running. That wouldn't be a good...
And nobody is going to quit going out to eat, trust me.
No.
It's not going to happen. They're going to pay an extra 25 cents for a taco. They're going to pay an extra 15 cents for a cup of coffee, we're already doing it, you just haven't paid attention.
As a resident, I would...
The new menus.
As a resident, I would prefer to see small annual increases as opposed to impact...
Well, this happens, you see, you see the number, and it's like, wow.
I think it's easier to absorb if it's a slight increase each year than what we saw several years ago, where the water rates basically doubled overnight. That impacted a lot of families' budgets in a negative way, so I'd like to just take it more systematic and do more due diligence in terms of our job here as city officials to make sure that we stay on topic and get those rates where they should be.
Normally, we won't have to do this again anytime soon, but, you know, and myself, I don't have any employees, revenues, you know, depends on how many students I get as to how much money I make, and it's not a whole lot. This is not something that, you know, I've got, it's not retail, it's not a discount store, this is, if you want art lessons, you know, you come sit for an hour, a few people at a time, so this is going to directly affect me, but hopefully, business is going to get out. You know, the doors are open, we're down there, hopefully, we're going to start making some more revenue. I'm willing to take the punch in the gut and do it. That's just...
Mind discussion?
My humble hand doesn't mean much.
I like what you said, Mayor, about small increases, $1 million, it's not a small increase. I mean...
If I may?
I just, I talk to a lot of business owners.
Councilman Douglas, if I may, don't let the number 1 million be anything other than just an overall, you have to consider one big thing. The person that's driving that number, the entity that's driving that number, if we did not have one particular entity, this increase would be nowhere near $1 million. Okay? It's not like RJ's is paying $250,000 of this, okay?
Yeah, of course not.
All right? It's just there's one particular entity that we service that, no matter what you do, is always going to be 75% of any increase. So that's where it comes from, okay? The school's not going to see much, Ashland won't see near as much, I mean, I've looked at the numbers, and those are our big three, but...
Just so, remember once clear, we're talking about TDCJ?
Yes.
And the tier structure would be TDCJ, Ashland, kind of everybody else?
Correct.
Three tiers. So the bulk of that $1 million is going to be paid by the top two tiers.
That is correct.
I would also like to say this, at what point is $1 million not worth having in the account? That's crazy dollars.
I like the idea of, you know, doing more street improvements.
A million dollars is a million dollars. That's revenue for the city to be spent on the people, on residents.
And being prepared for water system expenses as well, so...
I agree, $1 million is great, $2 million's better, but some of these business owners are already struggling because of COVID, they're still struggling, still struggling because of COVID, they're struggling because of cost increases, and now we're going to hit them with another one.
Well, I'm looking at mine, and mine is a $12 increase.
And whether it's 15 cents for a cup of coffee increase to the customer, it still affects everybody. If these numbers were not what they were, most of the people I talked to would not be as opposed to it. But I'm just one vote. You know, everybody, gas prices go up, right? What does everybody do? Blame the President. But people still buy gas. But are people still spending as much on gas, are people driving around as much as they used to? No, that's slowing down. Why? Because it went up. So yes, people will still go out to eat, people will still go to Glorious for their taco, they'll still go to Bars for their, you know, fried chicken, they just might not go as often, and for every customer that doesn't go as often as they normally would, that's affecting those small businesses. And it's, I mean, I get it, prices have to go up, I get it, but after talking with a lot of people, like I said, if these numbers were half of what they were, if it was a smaller increase, I mean, yes, granted, TDCJ, they're the biggest, they're the biggest player, but the small businesses are what I care about the most. You know, Porter's Coffee, right outside, they're going to have to pay more. You know, how much, I mean, I don't know their bottom line, I don't know how much they're profiting off of every cup, but if their cost of goods goes up, their product cost is going to go up, and it's, maybe they don't sell, you know, those 20 extra cups that day, that's going to affect them.
Any further discussion? Well, it's decision time, this is what five of you were elected to do, so if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Quick question, are these numbers set in stone? Like these, the figures?
Councilman Douglas, nothing in government has ever set in stone.
Well, I mean, like, your calculations and, you know, the increase, for example, from 40 to 50?
Let me say this...
Is it possible to recalculate?
Let me say this about the numbers, okay? The percentage with which these numbers increased is less than the percentage with which they increased the residential rates the last time, okay? So this is a lower percentage. The numbers look bigger because they're commercial rates, and they were always bigger numbers to begin with. So if you increase a $50 base bill by 10% versus a $12 base bill by 10%, the numbers are bigger. If the council so, whatever the council so desires is what we will do. Whatever the motion is that passes or fails, that's the trajectory we'll go on.
So hypothetically, if the council takes no action on this, there's a possibility of another item on a future agenda with a different rate structure?
No, sir. The council takes no action, I will not put this on an agenda item again. If they table it, it has to come back on a future item. So just like we amend, just like, let me see if I can help Councilman Douglas out here. Just like I said earlier tonight, if you pass this resolution, we have to do it as amended, okay? Then you have before you an ordinance that has specific numbers in it. You can always make a motion to adopt this ordinance as amended and tell me... You can always make a motion to adopt this ordinance as amended and tell me you took it up, 25%, take it up 15% instead of 25. And then I'll just go back and change the numbers. Whatever the council so desires is what we'll do. It's just, as the city manager, I have to bring all options to the table. This was an option, I brought it to the table. We'll move forward with however you guys want to go.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we take no action.
It's a motion from Councilmember Douglas. Is there a second? If there's no second, then I will entertain, does anyone else have a different motion? What this means is in the absence, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lynn, in the absence of a motion on this item, it will default to no action.
That is correct.
And then we'll just move on to the next agenda item?
Yes, sir.
So, one more time, is there another motion that anyone would care to make at this Okay? If not, then there is no action on Agenda Item 19.
There's a break, Mayor.
Sure. Take a five-minute recess, everyone. We're going to recess at 8:31, and we are reconvening at 8:34. Continuing with the agenda. Item number 20. Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Ordinance Number 21-18. An ordinance amending the adopted budget of the City of Kennedy, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, for the purpose of funding line items relating to the daily operations of the municipality, authorizing expenditures, providing for a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so normally, you know, we don't want to amend our budget too much throughout the year, even though we can try to amend it at the halfway mark. However, we have an issue at the airport. The airport also, much like when we wrote the city budget, the city's general fund had a overwhelming surplus balance. The airport had a surplus balance as well. The issue at the airport is that they were given about $30,000 to go find a vehicle as a loner-type vehicle for people flying in to use to run around Kennedy, get a burger, whatever they want to do. At the airport board meeting, the motion was made and passed that they wanted to find a brand-new vehicle, not a used one. They went out looking for a vehicle, and they could not locate a new vehicle for $30,000 that suited the needs or the desires of the airport. We did have the surplus in their budget, so what they requested was that if we could just go ahead, if the council would approve a budget amendment, to take their surplus, all their surplus, and move it to the purchased vehicle line item. That way, that would give them a little bit more money to go out and find a brand-new vehicle to use as their, their loan card. So that's what we're doing tonight, is that we would be moving that money there to enable them to go out and get a brand-new vehicle, as opposed to wishes of the board members to begin with. And then whatever money is left there at the six-month mark, we'll probably move somewhere else at that point for them to use, so...
That surplus is going to be enough to...
Yeah, that would give them $47,000, Councilman Parker. If they cannot find a new vehicle on $47,000?
Yeah.
We got problems.
Should be that. Any questions, Mr. Lynn?
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion on Agenda Item Number 20? If there are no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 20.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Four voted in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 21. Items to Consider for Placement on Future Agendas. Governing body, city manager, city attorney. Anyone have any items for placement?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. Okay, so with the failure of Item 18 regarding the Parks and Recreation Board, as I mentioned when it was first brought to the council, part of the problem is how they are structured. They are currently structured in such a fashion that it does not behoove them or facilitate anything they need to do. It's just, as you heard Mr. Richards talking tonight, since the council has elected to not allow the 4B to take them over, we're going to need to restructure the ordinance and bring them under the arm of the city. They will have to go under the Parks and Recreation budget that we have, which will then place them directly under Mr. Hernandez and myself, and they will be governed by us as the municipality and no longer go under the 4B. So this is an ordinance change that I'm going to have to put on the agenda most likely in January. So if council doesn't wish for me to do that, I need to know that. But we do need to, we do have to do this because their current setup is not correct, the way it's set up in the ordinance.
This is somewhat related to Agenda Item Number 21. Mr. Lynn, several people reached out to me that were, I guess, anticipating there might be an item on this agenda related to the conveyance of property to the San Antonio River Authority.
We're nowhere near that right now, Mayor. I have, I am in the process. When the city council at the workshop, at the end of that workshop, the consensus of the council at that point, more or less gave me the mandate to move forward with doing things, which then triggered the fact that I then had to do all my due diligence on the city's behalf to find out exactly what property we owed, we owned. Sarah was not exactly forthcoming or accurate with what property we owned, and I have so far, I'm finding out through lots of research, that while some of the property, they did say we owned, a lot of the property they said we owned, we didn't own. The three parcels that I had said we owned, we do own. And there's a lot of issues there with, a lot of the stuff that the city actually owns right now that I'm finding out is easements, not land. And the city is, you don't want to convey easements at all. You don't want to give up land, but you definitely don't want to give up your easements. So I have the land people working on things right now. I have Ms. Murphy working on things. Apparently, some of the land, I have found out that some of the land that we were told in a prior workshop that was bequeathed or given to the city, we actually paid money for. So I'm researching out to see exactly how much city funds were paid for the land out at Escanito. Right now, we're at $17,000, and I anticipate that number to go up. So once I have all my due diligence done on this, the city council and/or the governing body will meet, and we will discuss it with our attorney in an executive session. Just know, we are probably several months out before this will be finished, before we're ready to do this. So if anybody thinks this is going to be a quick fix, it's not going to be a quick fix.
So possibly February or March?
February or March at the earliest, depending upon what I find out.
Can we have an agenda item to move from stage two to stage one?
I, I have that on here, but I already did.
Okay, so that will be in December then?
We will do that in December, yes.
Good, that'll be good news for the residents.
Yes.
How many decades has it been?
It's been a while. It's definitely been a while.
It's going to be really exciting to get out of stage restrictions altogether.
Do you have it on the agenda for a Christmas party for the employees for next month?
Um...
For everybody?
Well, let me, let me, let me say it like this. We didn't really put it on the agenda last year. We just kind of did it and then told you guys we were doing it, invited you. I was kind of thinking the same thing this year. I mean, if you want me to put it on the agenda, I will.
No, if you already have plans for it?
Well, we do have plans, and the party will be at the convention center. We will do that. I'm trying to kind of think about what I'd like this to look like this year, because this year versus last year is a lot of different dynamics here. We don't necessarily have to pay somebody. We can actually make it ourselves, and so, you know. But when we do the Christmas party, it will be for everybody. It'll be for all the, all of the team members and all of the governing body, and then spouses, if you want to bring your spouses. We will do that.
Are you anticipating a midday party or an evening party?
What I'm going to do is, once I get it worked out in my brain with what I think it might look like, and I get with Ms. Descharnes and Ms. Miles, and then we start to trickle it down from there and see where we might go, then I will, one of us will get with you guys and find out what is convenient for the governing body. It may seem a little bit cart for the horse there, but we definitely want all of you all there for this, since a lot of y'all weren't able to attend the employee appreciation we did. We definitely want you guys there to interact with the, with the team. And if you all can all be there in the afternoon, then we'll do it in the afternoon, and we'll just kind of do our employee appreciation. We'll just bring them all over, pay them, and let them stay, and, you know, do it there. So, you know, we want to do a really nice Christmas tree, decorations, things of that nature. I don't know if we'll do a white elephant or not type thing or whatever, door prizes, I don't know. We'll figure it out between the three of us, Ms. Miles, Mr. Charonson, myself.
I'm curious.
Yes.
Can you clean the kitchen?
I haven't cleaned the kitchen just yet. They have three more things they have to fix in the kitchen, and they're supposed to be doing that next week, so after that, I'll be able to go in there and clean the kitchen up and deck scrub it a little bit, make it look nice.
Anything else on Agenda Item Number 21? Items to Consider for Placement on Future Agendas?
He said we had to put the ordinance for the Parks Board.
It's, we have to do one, and since it just says future agendas, what I'm simply doing in this line item is saying...
It has to be next month.
I have to, I have to construct this, but, you know, I'm giving you guys an opportunity to tell me, no, don't do it. Because once we walk away tonight, my focus on that line is going to be to figure out how to make it work right, and then I will bring it back to you guys as soon as I get it done, whether it's in January or February. It won't be, it will not be in December.
Schedule a workshop before we do that.
So...
Go.
We could, we could schedule a workshop in January for that.
Because it's something that we can't just do like that, we need to discuss it and talk about it.
Okay. January, be okay to put that on the agenda because of all the holidays coming up?
January.
Everybody okay with that? I mean, because we can continue, you know?
Keep in mind...
Yeah, nothing's going to change.
Just January stock show season, so don't do it during...
Try to avoid those dates.
Yeah.
Check in with U Show Board and find out what dates they got.
A lot of people can be busy, especially right up leading to the stock show.
Okay.
So, maybe...
The third week in January.
The first week?
Third, third week in January? Okay.
Third week in January.
Yes, so we...
January, January.
What will happen next is that at our December meeting, that's when we'll choose a date, correct?
Right, at our December meeting, we'll choose a date at that point in time.
Okay. Anything else on Item Number 21? If not, we'll move on to Item Number 22. Announcements of Community Interest and/or Upcoming Events. Anyone have any announcements?
Lions are playing in Robstown Friday at 7:30. Go Lions! First playoff game of the season.
Hope they do well.
They're facing the Ben Bol Badgers, which, if my memory is correct, we were supposed to face them, but they canceled because they didn't have enough players or COVID or something happened. This Friday at 7:30.
They've had an outstanding season, best season they've had in a long time, so very proud of those young athletes, yeah.
Almost two losses this season.
Great year.
Any other announcements? Just as a reminder, this Saturday, I'll be having my usual second Saturday coffee in the park with the mayor. I just looked up the forecast, it's going to be brisk. So if you come, maybe put on some long johns and a sweater. We will have hot coffee, I'm going to make coffee, and then Porter's Coffee will be just around the corner. So all are welcome, 9 to 11 a.m., coffee in the park with the mayor at the Escanito Creek Parkway Pavilion. Any other announcements? If not, then we will adjourn this meeting at 8:48 p.m. Thank you, everyone.